We're just a couple of minutes away from beginning the meeting. I'd invite you now to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for the opportunity to come together as a council today and discuss items to serve the citizens. Lord, I pray and thank you for the opportunity just to have everyone here safely. I pray that you'll not only be with our departments and our employees and all the citizens as this winter weather moves through the next 24 hours or so, just keep everyone safe and warm. Everything we do today, have glory for you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mike? Mark, the guys in the back, we've got, it sounds like Fuggerous is having trouble getting on, so let's make sure we're getting him on here. I think that said, we'll go ahead and we'll know when he joins, so Denise, why don't you go ahead and call the roll?
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fuggerous.
Here.
All right. We know Mark will be joining us, not sure about Amelia yet. So we'll move on to item five, the approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look these over. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Council, what's your pleasure on procedural motions?
I move for A and B.
You've got a motion for A and B. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Number four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped the, well, let's go ahead and do this, since we've got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerous.
Carry seven zero.
All right. Thank you. Bill, can you hold off just for a moment and let's give an opportunity, sorry, I skipped number four. Comments from citizens, this is the portion of each council meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If there are any residents that would like to address the council, you're welcome to go to the microphone and please state your name and address and keep your comments brief, and the council won't take action today on anything you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Okay?
I would.
Oh, go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to, I think you might have been aware that I wasn't real favorable to moving the meeting up in time as opposed to later in time, and I wanted to just explain my reasons why. I realize there may not be hardly anything at all on the agenda today that's controversial, and I realize this is an unusual circumstance with all the weathermen calling for a lot of snow and everything, but how do we know that there's nothing controversial? It may not be controversial to us, but there may be somebody out in the city that feels like they want to speak to one of these things. So I'm not real sure what we've done, maybe you could explain it, to put the word out to the city that the meeting was moved forward.
Okay.
I think, in my opinion, the better action would have been to move it to a later date, Wednesday night, Thursday night, or Friday night, because if someone intended to be here to address an item tonight, they would obviously realize that the meeting was canceled and would have had to have been rescheduled, where they could have sought to find out when it was rescheduled too. But by moving it forward, I'm not sure what kind of notice we got to these people that the item's being dealt with ahead of time when, at least as of last week, agenda was filed at the city website saying that the meeting would be at 6:00 tonight. I looked at our website this morning, I didn't see anything on our city's website saying that the meeting had been moved forward. I don't know how that's posted to the city, but I just think it's unfortunate that we moved forward instead of back, and so that was why I was opposed to it.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation, Jeff. And Anna, you can answer what we did. I know it went down on our social media and, of course, the notification to the press, but that doesn't address Jeff's concern as far as the public.
Yeah. So we have a notification system on our city website, too. So what I did was I sent that out. Anybody who signed up for that notification got the notification that it was moved. So it was pushed out to media, through our city website, and via email.
Was it on the city website?
It was sent out through the notification system. The actual website itself...
So it's only people that have asked to be notified?
Yes. Everybody who signed up for the notification system got it.
So any just other citizen that might have wanted to appear tonight to be opposed to anything, and I'm not saying that anything was, you know, a big controversial thing, but they would have had to have already notified the city that they wanted to be on this notification list.
Yeah. I mean, anybody can sign up for it, but, I mean, I was just...
But most people don't.
Right. I was just doing what the mayor told me to do.
Oh, I'm not...
So, sorry.
I'm not judging you.
Oh, way to throw me under the bus.
I'm not judging on you, I'm just saying I don't know, I don't think this is the best way to handle it, is all I'm saying.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, quite a few people got it, but I know we sent it out through every outlet that we have available, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm sure when we do Facebook, those are getting shared, hopefully, but it's not up to us, but, yeah. Yeah, I, look, Jeff, I understand your concern, and I won't spend a lot of time on it, we were trying to find a time, my staff will tell you that the thing I hate most is when snowy days are coming and trying to decide when to close City Hall, whether to close City Hall, employees wanting to go home early, and I get all that, and it's, and you're, you know, it might not do anything tonight. I mean, it looks like it's going to, but we don't know that, and we don't know how bad the roads are going to get. But with the notification issues for city council meetings, we needed to go ahead and make a determination, so I know the council was individually reached out to with some options. At the time, we didn't know that Wednesday night would be any better than Tuesday night. Now, it's looking like now, it probably would have been okay, but we're, you know, we're dealing with some unknowns, and I just, I'm of the thought, I didn't really think about moving it back a few hours, like, or up a few hours like we did, would really change anybody's, I mean, any more than changing it to another night. Somebody who can not be here at noon today might also not be able to be there on Wednesday night or Thursday night, so hopefully, this won't ever happen again. This is the first time we've had to do this, I think, since, in the 14 years since I've been mayor, so we were kind of treading new ground, but I'd certainly apologize if any of our residents can't be here to speak to something they wanted to speak about. So with that said, are there any other comments from the public or council? Okay. They'll move on now to item seven, the chamber report. Bill, is it going to be a brief one?
Very.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Oh, y'all had asked, oh, let's, I'm hearing something. Will that play? Y'all had asked, 30-second video, we produced some videos to promote Springdale and some businesses, I don't know if that'll play or not, it was almost there, and if it's not, it's fine. This is something different, the nature center?
We're still dealing with Zoom, I think, but it looks like they're close.
Oh.
There we go.
Audio's low, but there's no speaking. So I'll just talk over it. You know, we try to promote a variety of things through what we do with A and P and also through economic development. In 2023, we're going to be doing some workforce-related videos with employers, trying to help them get the word out to not only our high school students, but those who are just unemployed in the city. But this is something that we highlighted, our nature center, and we share that and also promote that on Facebook and some targeted communities around our region, looking for something to do on a Saturday or Sunday, and really, I got the idea to update it when the trail was completed through the, along the creek side, so we'll continue to bring those, but did want to, we promised we'd do that. Very quickly, just a few things, we've got six companies we're working with right now, three are Springdale companies looking to expand, three are the companies that are looking to relocate to Springdale, so pretty busy in terms of expansion we're doing. 1,546 jobs created in Springdale through November, that's according to the state, so, you know, even in a time of uncertainty with inflation, everything else, our economy, as I know y'all experience, continues to click along, sales and use tax, 25% December over December, and 19.5% over 2021. I wanted to mention, we'll be kind of reporting what we did from a chamber perspective with our Hispanic business community, we engaged with 63 Hispanic entrepreneurs, would be the best way I describe it, we had a series of seminars we did with folks that, just to be honest, we had no involvement, we didn't know who these folks were, but we had an intentional outreach. We partnered with Small Business Development Training Center, things like how to start a business, if you've got a business, how can you use social media to affordably market your company. Very, very pleased, we will continue that program in '23 as well as, the best way to describe it is Leadership Springdale, which I think y'all are familiar with, Light, where we invite minority members of our community to, in a very short span, three days over three weeks, come in and kind of see what makes our community tick. We met with individually more than 70 Springdale businesses in 2022, and those, we call those our business retention meetings, what's going on with you, do you have any concerns, do you have any needs, do you have any opportunities for expansion? It's just how we connect to find ways that we, as a chamber and an economic development arm, can work with businesses in town to see what they need. I'd hope to introduce you to our new Economic Development Director, Jay Seago, he is en route back from, had some travel issues, very excited about that. Jay's a bright young man, spent 20 years in the Navy with a variety of responsibilities, including he was commander of the Panama City Base and had to marshal that base through rebuilding after a major Cat Five hurricane went through there. He also spent a significant amount of time in the Pentagon, where he helped marshal some Four Stars through their confirmation process, so very excited, he has hit the ground running, and you'll get an opportunity to meet him, if not before the next quarter, before then. Just a couple of dates I want to let you know, Slim Chickens on Thompson, we'll be cutting a ribbon there, opening up on the second, that's next Thursday. We expect, Wiener Snitzler will break ground within a week to 10 days out on Elm Springs Road. The Frito-Lay Distribution Warehouse and Center on Kendrick Avenue is nearing completion, we still have some sewer work that's got to be done there. Wood Power Sports next to WT Equipment out on the interstate expects to open in early February, and last we heard, Hot Lane Express is looking maybe at an April opening, it takes, once you get a building built, it takes a while to get all the rooms furnished out, and then I just want to say thank you, and again, just encouragement, I guess it's not a done deal, but any of you that could be our guest at our February 6th legislative reception in Little Rock, we hope you can make it. If you think you can come, if you'll holler at us, holler at Rhonda, that may be an item a little later, as far as committee standpoint, but...
Right. Yeah, we're looking forward to that, and I think, you know, if any of y'all are going and want to work out carpooling, well, I know that Colby and I will at least be going from the city.
I think Randall might have indicated he plans to go, too.
Yeah, so.
Any questions?
It'll be a trip down there, it starts at...
4:30 to 6:30, and it's the Arkansas State University System Office, which is across the street from the Capitol.
So we'd need to leave about 1:30-ish, and...
Well, depends on how fast you drive, man.
Yeah, I'd need to leave about 2:30, and, but we'd be back by 10 that night, so, yeah. Okay.
And if you wanted to stay, I think we've, our leadership class will be there, we might get you a rate with the hotel we're at, if you wanted to do that, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. No, that's all, I did have a question for Colby, I know we were hoping to get some, I'm taking a chance here, we were hoping to get some sales tax numbers yesterday, did we ever get those yet?
DFNA hasn't published those, I checked them right before we came over here, they're not out yet.
Okay. All right. Thanks. All right. We'll move on now to item eight, Planning Commission Report and Recommendations by Patsy Christie.
Can we start the PowerPoint, guys? The first item is a request to rezone 2.15 acres located at 1,094 Nichols Road. Request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A1 to Low-Medium Density Single Family Residential District SF2. Planning Commission recommends approval of that rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to Low-Medium Density Single Family Residential District SF2 and declaring an emergency. Okay. I don't...
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Is this for setback purposes, or just...
Well, I think they intend to split the property.
Gotcha.
But, you know, it's a single-family residential along the lake, I don't know that we'd put anything else out there.
Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? Okay. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerous.
Second.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes.
Harriman. Fuggerous. Powell.
Yes.
With the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
As usual, the emergency clause is included because of pending actions. The next request is to rezone 3.02 acres located at 4,500 South 48th Street. Request is to rezone the property from C2 and C5 to High Density Multi-Family Residential District MF24. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 and Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 to High Density Multi-Family Residential District MF24 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance speed up.
Was there any opposition to this in plan?
There were some questions about how the property had been lowered since the time it was originally submitted.
Had been what?
Had been lowered, they've been hauling red dirt out of it for quite some time. There is a residential care facility going on to that piece that they're not rezoning, and there were some questions about that, but I don't think there was any major questions about the multifamily itself, other than drainage and site distances and that kind of stuff for the tract itself.
So there were people at the Planning Commission that were present that asked questions, is that what you're saying?
There was, I think there was one lady there that was present, that lives across the street, and I think we've been in contact with her at least once, if not twice, since that meeting. And she's not so concerned about the zoning district itself, but how the property is laid out, and what kind of screening they're going to have, and those kind of things, not, her concern wasn't necessarily the zoning district.
And that'll all come later.
Yeah, they'll, they have to come back with large scales, as a matter of fact, the large scale for the, such a living place that's there, has to be resubmitted because it had been expired, and so they'll come back with a revised based on what the new elevations are on that side.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Are there other questions? Anyone in the room want to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerous. Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes, not happily, but, yes.
Move the merge clause, be it done.
Second. Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerous. Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
With the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
Jeff, we did notify all the applicants and all the representatives that the meeting had been changed, we started yesterday as early as we could.
What about the neighbors, though?
I don't, did we try, we didn't get ahold of her, but the authorized representative knew that the meeting had been changed.
Those are people that I'm worried about.
Yeah. We talked about that a little bit yesterday. The next one is a point, 1.55 acre tract, kind of in the middle behind Sam's, if you remember previously, we rezoned the property to the south, MF24, they're asking for this piece to be rezoned to MF24 as well, and included with that other piece that we already rezoned. It is going from C5 to MF24. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from Thoroughfare Commercial District C5 to High Density Multi-Family Residential District MF24 and declaring an emergency.
The ordinance passed.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any more questions? Anyone in the room? Go ahead.
All that, you see where it says MF24 on the slide, it's everything that's south of Members Lane, all across, all that, yeah, there was a little pocket in there that got left out in the legal description, so we had to do another one.
No more questions, I'll call for the vote.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerous. Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
The merge clause be it done.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fuggerous. Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
With the ordinance emergency clause, carry seven zero.
The next item is a conditional use for a Use Unit 42 in a C2 zone, this is a church that has a conditional use over by Cracker Barrel, and they're moving to this new location. Planning Commission reviewed this request for the conditional use to be moved to this location, and recommends approval with the condition that they observe the noise ordinance in the Fire Prevention Code. This is the layout of the building, they have a shared parking agreement for all the parking that is around that, and have limited their times of operation, so it doesn't conflict with any of the adjacent owners, the owner of the property is understanding of that. So Planning Commission recommends approval of this conditional use, title of the resolution reads, A Resolution Approving a Conditional Use for the Harbor Church of Northwest Arkansas at 986 Elmwood Street is set forth in ordinance number 4030.
Resolution be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments?
So, Patsy, I think I've asked this question before, but I've kind of forgotten, do we grant the conditional use to the person, the church that's wanting to rent this property, or to the people that own the property?
The conditional use is granted to the church itself at that location, and that's why this one that we're seeing it again, because they had a conditional use for a location in a building over by Cracker Barrel, and they are moving to this new location. It's the same property owner, but the conditional use has to move with them to the new location, so we have to look at the conditions when they move to a different area.
So I assume, though, that you have to get permission from the property owner?
Right. We would never accept it if we didn't have, if we didn't have permission from the property owner, and that we didn't have proper documentation from the church board, or whatever their governance is, to know that the church is doing that and authorizing someone to make that application.
Other questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, Denise?
Fuggerous. Powell.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am. Carry seven zero.
The next item is a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage curves, sidewalks in connection with a large-scale development for reliable poultry. They are expanding their parking lot, and they are asking for a waiver of street improvements to, is it Preston? Is that the name, no, Monitor Road, and a master street plan collector that's shown on there, it's that pink line that connects from the curve in the relocated Butterfield Coach up to Monitor Road, and we all feel like that that just didn't get replaced when we did the extensions, and engineering is recommending that that be taken off of that master street plan, we just haven't gotten through the process of getting the master street plan updated yet. The Planning Commission is recommending that the waiver of street improvements be granted, so title of the resolution reads, A Resolution Approving a Waiver of Street Improvements, Drainage Curbs, Scudders, and Sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Reliable Poultry in Connection with L2307, a Large-Scale Development.
There's no sidewalks, curves out there.
Well, there's sidewalks on Butterfield Coach down through there, yeah, they're already in on that side of it, yeah.
Can you, do you mind going back to that other picture, yeah, there? Thank you.
And that road that's on the master street plan would basically be between this property and the church, and goes on up to the north and connects to Monitor. That's the part we're waiving that, because they would have to do street improvements for that, because it's on the master street plan.
I see.
So that doesn't look like the master street plan picture, though, if you go back, you're talking about...
Well, if you look down there at the corner, the second corner where it comes across, it crosses Preston Lane right up through there, that's exactly where it is.
Crosses what?
Let me, my hand's not sturdy enough to do this, I don't think, I don't know that it reaches that far, anyway.
You're talking about the little pink...
The straight line that goes from the double curve in Butterfield Coach, straight up to Monitor Road that goes around the mountain, that straight line up through there, that's the one we're recommending come off.
The pink one, though.
The pink one, yes.
Yeah.
The pink one, come off.
So the reason why, to me, it doesn't look like that lines up with what you're talking about, is because the one on the map, the pink road, looked to me like it was closer to, or north of the second.
Well, see, that's Emma, that yellow line coming through there is Emma, and the top of that pink line is Huntsville.
Yeah, but it, I'm talking about, it seems like it's a lot further to the east, like over there by Preston Lane.
Well, it's crossing Preston Lane, yes, and it comes up along the property line between those two pieces of property, where the church is at 3042, and then if you take that straight on down, it gets down to that second curve, when you take that line straight on down.
Okay. Well, that's the second curve. We're looking at the second curve.
This is the first curve, because this is Emma where it comes across and changes to Preston Lane.
Okay, I'm with you now.
Okay.
I think. There's not a road there now, though, between the church and...
Correct.[1715.83]
Right.
There's not, there's not a road there now, yes.
Okay.
You're right.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
With option one?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, motion, a second. Any further comments or questions? Anybody in the room? Kay Denise?
Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Carries seven zero.
The next item is a waiver of street improvements, uh, along Highway 112 in connection with a large scale development plan. As we all know, large scale, uh, Highway 112 is under redesign by the highway department. And what planning commission is recommending that this waiver be granted for improvements to 112, provided that the donation of the right of way is needed for the widening of 112. So, that would be, um, granting the waiver with the, uh, donation of right of way. Title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Calderon Landscaping in connection with L 2260, a large scale development.
Does that fall under option one?
Yeah, except we need to add to what, option one with donation of right of way, as it says in the whereas, it didn't get into the, to the first...
So, we entertain a motion with that addition to option one?
Right, right.
Make a motion to approve the resolution with the addition to option one.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Are there other questions, comments? Before we vote? Anybody in the room? Kay Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Al.
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
The next one is another waiver request for, uh, street improvements along Highway 265. This is a hangar out by the airport that was blown away, and it's been torn down and being extended, and they are requesting a waiver of the street improvements. Uh, planning commission recommends approval of the waiver. Title of the resolution reads a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks to set forth in ordinance number 3725 to flying the coop hangar expansion in connection with N 2229 and line, large scale development.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? With option one, is that right, Mike? Okay. Everybody, the second good with that?
Yep.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman. Fugiruse. Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
And the next one is a resolution requesting a waiver of street improvements in connection with a single family home being built at 613 Black Oak Avenue. Planning commission recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads in a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Lionheart Enterprises LLC in connection with 613 Black Oak Avenue, a single family dwelling.
Why would we waive this?
I don't recommend waiving this one, but planning commission voted to recommend it be waived.
What was the vote?
Uh, I think it says in the resolution itself.
They recommended the complete waiver?
Uh, I believe so, yeah. It was a unanimous vote. There's not any other sidewalks on that area. I... Yeah, there's a sidewalk across the street, right. It was built with those, uh, apartments that were being built on the other side.
Are there any major drainage issues that would prevent a sidewalk? It's hard to tell from this area.
I think there's a power line, you know, a power pole in the way, and there's a ditch out there, yes. But, you know, the other option would be, would be to do payment in lieu of improvement, so we would have that to do when and if we got to the point of extending the sidewalk.
Do, do we have any plans for Black Oak?
No.
I'm not aware of any plans, no.
Was there any discussion if, if we were to, I mean, someday, it may be long after I'm gone, someday Black Oak may be improved through there. Is there, would there, would there be a need for additional right of way?
Well, I can't answer that, because I don't know if we would leave the existing one on that side or what we'd have to do to shift it. I mean, I didn't, I know in the engineering to be dangerous, but not that.
How much right of way we've got there?
I don't know that it's ever been checked. I think it's one of those roads that there's not a lot of dedicated right of way. Now, we got right of way on the north side when that project was done.
Right.
But this may just be prescriptive. I don't know.
Okay.
And it, yeah, it's a minor collector on the master street plan, too. So, it's going to have to be widened.
Is it, how, how, could, at this point, could we, if, if the council wanted to complete, do the, the waiver, could we add language that they would donate the right of way?
Counsel can do whatever they want to. I think we asked them if they do payment in lieu of, and they wanted us to vote on the waiver, so.
Yeah, okay. What do y'all want to do with this?
So, the whole idea of, of our ordinance that says you have to put in a sidewalk, even whether or not any down the street, is that the, the hope is that somewhere along the line, there, there will be sidewalks down the street, right?
Correct. We never start, we're never going to get them connected.
I thi, I think that, and I, I agree with that, too. Or we'll never, like, as you said, you know, we'll never get them done. There are, there are circumstances that would, where a payment in lieu of or a, or a bill of assurance would make more sense, because you don't want to put one in the wrong place.
And when you hit, when you go in from a...
You don't want to waste your money on a sidewalk.
Right, when you go in from a street this size to a collector street, it's a wider street to start with. So, whether, it's either put back way into the yard or it's put in a place that doesn't, doesn't work well. So, that's why payment in lieu of improvements usually works better. But if the applicant wants to ask for the full waiver, they can.
Well, is any, either of those two situations present here where it would move it way up into the yard or what you just said, what was the other one? I forgot what you said.
Okay, so it'd have to come additional 10 feet of right of way in the sidewalks inside the right of way.
Are, what are they doing here?
Building a single family home.
And typically, or so we're waiving curb and gutter as well?
Right, we don't require curb and gutter being built with a single family home. We do require sidewalks to be built.
So, there's no waiver of curb and gutter?
Right, it's really just a sidewalk.
I may have a resolution be adopted.
With option one?
Just a straight waiver.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to side walk.
Yeah, with the added curb and gutter.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Everybody clear on the, what it is, this, with option one? Okay. Uh, anyone else need to speak to this? Kay Denise?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
No, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Al.
Yes.
Watson.
No.
Overton?
No.
Fails four to three. So, they would be, the way it's left, they would be required to put a sidewalk.
Is the council, I don't know, I don't know, it wouldn't be official, but is there some direction?
I'd like to make a motion for option three.
Okay.
To approve the payment in lieu.
We have a motion.
I'm second, Dan.
And a second. Any further discussion or questions on this with option three? Okay. Denise?
Bailey.
No.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries six one. Option three.
Okay. Thank you. Item nine is finance committee, and a, uh, council member Williams is not with us today. Would somebody like to take that, or you want me to take it? It's these two items. She did have it at committee.
I'm retired.
I, I, I'm just, we'd turn the first one over to Ernest, and then we'd deal with the second one. So, how do y'all want to?
I'll take it.
Okay.
All right, open up, oh, I'm sorry, uh, two resolutions from the finance committee. Both of them were forwarded with recommendation for approval. The first one is at 9A, and the title to that resolution is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit wherein Springdale Masonic Lodge number 316 is defendant, project number 18BPS10, tract three. And I'll let Ernest address this again, please.
Thank you. The, as I mentioned, that committee, the city's updated appraisal was $500,000 for this property, which is right across the street that we've been using rent free for, going on three years. The property owner's appraisal was 605. They've offered, up, they've offered to settle for 530, which would be 30,000 above the city's revised appraised amount.
What was our original appraisal?
Original was, uh, 360. It was updated, uh, to the date of taking, which was about a year and a half after the original appraisal was done. And there was also some space in the basement that had been inadvertently left out, but a lot of it's unfinished space, and that's what raised the appraisal to 500,000, city's appraisal.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse. Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes.
Carries seven zero.
Second item has to do with the purchase of mitigation credits. And, uh, again, it was forwarded with recommendation for approval. Title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to purchase stream and wetland mitigation credits from watershed Conservation Resource Center and Steamwork, Streamworks Mitigation Services LLC, respectively, in compliance with Army Corps of Engineers permit for detention pond project at Springdale Airport.
You'll bend it.
Was the project, was the pond as, as developed not, uh, sufficient to alter our drainage maps problem?
It is. That's the whole reason we're doing it, is to alter the...
But we have to have, we have to buy credits in order to do it instead of, I thought when we approved, uh, putting that out there, that would automatically take care of the problem we have.
No, this is a requirement by the Corps of Engineer. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but we've been going back and forth with the Corps now for over two years, trying to get a permit.
So, constructing the pond affects the flood plain, which is the, the part that we're trying to fix. In order to construct the pond, we have to buy mitigation credits for the stream that we're damaging and the wetlands that we're destroying that are in that location today.
I understood when we, when that was first designed, that that would, uh, that would take care of the flood map requirements. Is this an additional requirement by the Corps?
Yes.
Yes, that, that, you're, I think you're talking about two different things. The, the project will do what we had hoped it would do. But in order to do the project...
But in the process of building the pond, we'll be damaging some wetlands and damaging some stream, so we have to buy mitigation credits to offset those, those damages.
So, this is Army Corps of Engineers extortion.
Hey, hey, Ben.
I'm not going to disagree with you.
Ben, I thought we talked about 100,000.
It, it is. It's 55,000 each, so it's about 110,000.
It was 110, it's 55 for...
Just, and for those who are, and I won't take a lot of time on it, but just as a reminder on some of this, the council did approve, I think, I think 800. We, we first thought this project was going to take around $800,000. Uh, we did go out to bid. Emery Sapp and Sons was the contractor, the, they were the low bid, and it was seven, it was right at 800, just under 800,000. We have been going back and forth with the Corps of Engineers. We've had, and this, a lot of this goes back way, well before Ben's time, but, but we've had Congressman Womack's staff, Congressman Bozeman's staff, Senator, I'm sorry, Senator Bozeman's staff, Senator Cotton's staff, all together trying to work, uh, the Corps of Engineers and get us, get this expedited, this permitting process. Seems that when the, we thought we were good until the, I, I don't, I, it was the timing of the administration change, which throws a lot of these, a lot of these departments into some, some change and can, can bog things down. And, uh, I didn't know about the possibility of these mitigation credits until Ben brought them to me. Uh, it's just a, uh, I don't like it, but we do, we also have, since the council approved all this, we've also secured a state grant, uh, through Adam of $300,000. So, so we're still well ahead of the game, but it's o, over what the, we first thought we'd be spending on this, but it's not, uh, still not, I wish we didn't have to do it, I guess, is what I'm saying. But there is a, as y'all know, there's a lot of development hinging on this, and, and we, we are ahead of the game. I think we, we're, we're good. And this was forwarded, as, as Jeff said, this was forwarded with recommendation for approval.
At the risk of me shooting myself in the head, I move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there further questions or comments?
Be a welcome addition to this council. Thank you, Mike. You liberals can vote.
You sure you want that as part of the motion, Rex? Uh, okay. If there are no other questions, I'll ask Denise to call the roll.
Fugiruse. Al.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Carries seven zero.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, item 10, health sanitation and property maintenance, and that's you.
All right. I guess, uh, this resolution was also forwarded from the committee with recommendation for approval for purposes of, um, hiring professional services to procure a solid waste contract. And, uh, title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement to procure a solid waste contract and other purposes.
This is the contract that we're going to have with solid waste, uh, services. They are a professional company out of Texas, and all they do is help draw up RFPs, uh, for solid waste companies to bid on the contracts. As y'all know, we're going to be going out to bid later this year for the first time in many, many years. We want to make sure, uh, this is with the old Sunray Company, Mike. This will help make sure that we have all the best practices that we may not think of on our own, that other cities are doing all across the country. So, um, there is a fee associated with this. It's $45,500, but the winning bid, the company that has the winning bid will reimburse the city for this contract.
Move resolution forward. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, uh, to approve the resolution. Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Kaydenise?
How?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman? Fugiruse? Carry seven zero.
Okay, item eleven, police and fire committee. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one item came before saying it was recommend, recommended for approval. It is a, agreed to resolution. It's a resolution accepting a grant from the Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program, authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement in appropriated funds. This grant will allow our police department to buy, uh, some items they need, shields and some other things. And since Chief Hudson's here, if you have any question for him?
This is just, this is an annual grant we get from the federal government through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, referred to as JAG. Uh, our share this year is thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars. And, uh, as stated, we're just asking for your approval to enter into this grant. Our intent is to purchase some maintenance, safety, and enforcement equipment. I can go through that if you need me to.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve. Any other questions or comments? Kaydenise?
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse? How?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, personnel committee, Chairman Mark Fugiruse. Mark, are you okay on time? I know you're pushing up against the deadline. You, you want to take? Okay. Uh, would somebody like to take this item? Two items, actually. There you go.
All right, we need to open up, uh, personnel committee. The first item, item A, is an ordinance developing, implementing, and maintaining a catastrophic leave bank program for eligible employees of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, pursuant of Arkansas Code, uh, fourteen dash four dash twenty-three and declaring emergency. And Gina?
This would replace our policy of donating, uh, vacation time to employees that don't have personal leave when they have a catastrophic event. It would be a bank where people would, uh, donate to the bank directly, and then the employee would apply for the, um, additional sick leave.
And there would be an employee, a, a committee of employees that would
Correct.
oversee this?
Yes.
As far as the, okay.
Is, is that calendar year they had to do it between a certain time during the calendar year?
In the month of January. We've worked that detail out with Kristy and payroll, but it would probably be the first week of January, first pay period of January.
Okay.
I'll move the ordinance to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, Denise. What, sorry, Ernest, did you have something?
I do. The, the, I actually directed this. I don't know why I don't remember, but the title says declare an emergency, but I don't see that there's an emergency clause actually in here, so we want to make the, the next item would, since it's a resolution, would take effect immediately, so
Right.
this would, this would actually become part of the next item. But the stat, statute requires this to be passed separately by ordinance. But it does, it does need an emergency clause. It's in the title. For some reason, I don't know why, they didn't put it in the ordinance itself.
We'll, uh, we'll vote on the motion to approve first. Roll call.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse? How?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse? How?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes, to cover the city attorney's comp.
Both the ordinance from emergency clause, uh, carry seven zero. Okay, we also have a resolution adopting the revised Personnel Manual for the city of Springdale, and Gina's gonna take this as well.
As I said last week, we had this reviewed by two separate legal councils. One was Ernest, the other, Susan Kendall, who's an employment attorney. It's been through the hands of several department heads and, um, just employees as well that we've asked to look it over. The mayor and Colby and I have gone through it together. A lot of it is updated language. There is, uh, the evaluation process for one is changing, but the majority of it is just updated language.
Okay.
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone? Kaydenise?
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse? How?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item thirteen.
Actually, council, uh, items thirteen and fourteen, I, I know we've done this once before, but I have been asked to, uh, have the council table items thirteen and fourteen to the next city council meeting, which is Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. As sometimes, when you deal with a large corporation, it takes, uh, extra time for things to go up and down the chain. So I told the attorney that I would, I would make that request and encourage you to table both these items to the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Is one of those a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to table to the next council meeting. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse? How?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Carry seven zero. Thank you.
All right, and we have, uh, item fifteen. Discussion date for the first committee meeting in February. I think that's what Bill, that, that's for the chamber, uh, or for the legislative. And I think, uh, Jeff, I think you mentioned just doing it that Tuesday night, which would be the next night, uh, and doing it in the tactical training room, like we did once before for a committee. That, is that good with everybody?
Good for me.
Okay, and, uh, again, uh, if you can make it down to Little Rock Monday night, well, we'll, uh, we'll be happy to carpool with your help, help somehow.